Mike, mic's on? Where's my gavel on? Please take your seats. Welcome to the seven o'clock session of the Newport Beach City Council, October 23rd, 2007. There was no closed session, so there's nothing to report out of our closed, or closed session that didn't happen. Roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Very good, thank you. We're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance now, which will be followed by an invocation given by Rabbi Mark Rubenstein from Temple Isaiah. So if you'd all please stand and remain standing through the invocation. And Leslie, why don't you lead us tonight?
.............................................
Heavenly Father, we ask for spirituality, inspiration at this time of crisis for our sister communities who face fire. Oh Lord our God, we ask that you heal Southern California. We ask that the leaders here tonight are able, at a time of crisis for our other cities in Southern California, add some type of inspiration. Our prayers are with our fellow citizens of other communities. Oh Lord, grant perfect peace to Newport Beach, protect our city here in our land and in all other communities in Southern California. Oh Lord, let us look at a time where there will be grace and kindness, compassion and love for other communities and for us all. Grant us fullness of life and sustenance, save us from all present danger and evil. May the King of the Universe extend all of our lives, increase our days, and add to our years. May we be free of trouble and delivered from all mishap. May the Lord of Heaven be your help at all times and in every season, as we all say. Amen.
Thank you Rabbi. Okay, tonight, I guess we have no presentations. That's, I think, the first for my tenure here as Mayor. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, let's start with Councilman Hen tonight.
I have nothing.
Councilman Curry?
No items tonight.
Councilman Solich?
I have nothing.
Councilman Gardner?
Because my district is the most vulnerable to fire, I would really like an update from the Fire Marshal, if it's possible. Obviously, it depends on how thinly we're stretched the next couple of weeks trying to get through this period. But on particularly Buck Gully and the canyons there. I know we are not in compliance in some areas, and I'd like to know some new ideas that maybe we can speed up the process, because if we're going to have a La Niña year and not have the rainy season, we're gonna be in trouble.
Councilman Daigle? None? Well, I've got several. First of all, I'd like to thank both the Police and Fire Department for staging and putting on Public Safety Day on October 14th over at the police headquarters, and the fire station there was well attended. I showed up about, right after the demonstrations were over, but there was a big crowd there. A lot of the kids were having a good time, and I think it's definitely a great thing for the community to have that kind of outreach to the community and bring them in and show them exactly what our public safety officers do. Also, on October 18th, I'd like to say thanks to the Commodores, who annually they staged the Lifeguard and Firefighter Appreciation Beach Party. They named the Firefighter of the Year, the Lifeguard of the Year, a lot of other awards. I don't remember all of them, but it was a fun event and also very well attended, and that was over at the Dunes. I'd like to announce that on October 30th, the city council and the Planning Commission will be having a joint study session here in council chambers at seven o'clock PM, and we will be discussing some issues with regard to proposed development agreement to be entered into with the Irvine Company. And so that will be a public meeting, and the public is invited to attend. Lastly, since we are talking about the fires, I would like to mention the efforts that our firefighters are doing. I believe we have three engines, four, four engines now, up helping battle the blazes as many other cities have contributed fire resources as they can. And certainly, we need to protect our homes and Long Buck Gully and Corona Del Mar and just the average daily, you know, occurrences of needs for fire protection. But we are contributing resources, and we're swapping those guys in and out. We're backfilling with overtime and things like that to make sure that our stations are manned, but that, but we are contributing to the effort. Okay, notice to the public?
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 13 and Supplemental Item 20 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lecturing upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Gardner, anything to pull? Councilman Daigle?
None to pull, but I did want to note that Item 5, we're continuing to move forward with the city's first equestrian arena, and because of its proximity to the Delhi Channel, we've had to do a lot of documentation, so that kind of explains the long process, but we are moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilman Curry?
None.
Mayor Lieutenant Solich?
I've got a question on Number 8. Is that being pulled by staff, or is the action no action? Is that what it is?
It's no action.
Okay, thanks. No action. I'd just like a slight correction to the minutes. We did, at our last meeting, adjourned back into closed session. There was nothing to report out, and just have the record reflect that, please, the minutes. All right, to staff, anything they want to pull?
Nothing on the consent calendar, but I would like to announce now that Item Number 18, I'm going to ask for a continuance of that issue. It's Back Bay View Park replenishment and enhancement, approval of landscaping concept, approval of professional services agreement with SWA.
Okay, so we will be continuing that item to a future meeting, not yet determined. Okay, does the public have any items that they'd like to?
Number 9.
All right, you need to come to the podium, state your, you come to the podium, sir. State your name for the record and the item that you'd like pulled.
My name is Darryl Nolta, I'm pulling Item Number 9.
Okay, just put your thing on the card.
This is the first time I've been here.
Yeah, put it in there.
Hi, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, all right, well, please, I'm sorry, the city clerk handed me a correction. We won't have those minutes until our council meeting on 11/13, so please make sure that those minutes reflect the comment that I just made. Thank you. All right, does anybody else in the public have an item they want pulled? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval to consent calendar Items 1 through 13 and S20 with Number 18 being continued and the exception of Number 9.
Second.
All right, well, 18's not on the consent calendar. Are we voting on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right. I apologize.
Hold on, off on that.
1 through 13 and S20, and pulling Item Number 9.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, sir, why don't you come forward? We're gonna take Item Number 9 now. Back Bay Science Center Construction Completion Report to receive and file.
Mayor, thank you very much, this is Darryl Nolta. I've never been here before, this is my opportunity. I decided to come today to speak about an item that's extremely important to me and many people in the County of Orange. I'm a citizen of Westminster and, of course, Orange County. As an environmentalist and an activist in the County of Orange, as well as Westminster, also a Commissioner of the City of Westminster, I am very concerned about the project dealing with the Back Bay Science Center. I've spoken many times at the Board of Supervisors about this issue. I was, in fact, at the groundbreaking ceremony of the Back Bay Science Center, and I think it's absolutely wonderful that this project is nearing completion and will be completed very soon. In fact, I received a call from a certain individual in the county telling me that, in fact, the lease had been signed and that the 30 days, the tenant improvements are going to take place in regards to the County of Orange, and specifically talking about the water quality lab. As some of you may know, I happen to be a strong advocate for biofilm research, which during oral communications I will discuss. But I want to bring forth the issues concerning specifically about this project, about the completion of this. And I have expressed very deep concern about the fact that the Back Bay Science Center is going to have, it's a multi-function institution, not just pertaining to coastal water quality, which is supposed to be conducting research as well as doing the water testing and the educational facility. But I have brought forth other issues about the fact that the, that lab and those buildings do not provide, in my opinion, sufficient backup power. That's number one. I was given a tour of the facility, and I was very, very concerned about the degree of dust that I found in the lab. And unfortunately, at the time that I came, I was told that it's not going to be a positive pressure facility, which expressed very deep concern. I believe that there will be pathogens, and anyone who understands what I'm talking about, microbiology, biofilm, and the issues pertaining to coastal water quality, knows that research is supposed to be conducted in that facility, and obviously, you're going to work with pathogens. It is not, that lab is not going to be the primary secondary backup in case something happens to the main lab, which is located, you know, close to Civic Center. But it is a plan where if everything went wrong, like in Long Beach with the health lab, that facility would possibly be used as a back bay, and you would have pathogens. You have, right across from that facility, that lab, you're going to have educational facility, aquariums, you're going to have students. And I'm still not satisfied that the containment of any potential pathogen work would not spread into, into the areas of where there might be students. And I, I know Dave Kiff very, very well, and that's why I know the city manager. He knows that I have been talking out about this very much, and this gives me a chance to address the city council. That's why I came, because I can't get satisfaction from the County of Orange in regards to these very, very important issues. I'm extremely happy, and I really commend the City of Newport Beach as being leaders in the state of California in regards to building this absolutely wonderful facility. These points that I'm bringing forward are not meant to distract from this most great project, but simply to improve and make sure that the students are safe, that that facility, as envisioned by people who donated the money, including the County of Orange, that it fulfills the requirements, not just the City of Newport Beach, but the entire County of Orange and also the state of California. Because that lab was intended to be a leader in coastal water quality. I will talk further about that during oral communications, and I had a chance to look at the staff report, and it's excellent. From the way that the city council chose to implement this project, it was right on. You only had a limited amount of money, something like $6.3 million. I don't know if it went over budget, but, but this is a great thing in, in our County of Orange, and that's, those are my comments, and it's not meant to distract from this tremendous project. Thank you very much for letting me, letting me address you. And at oral communications, I will further elaborate about my real, also my other real concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, entertain a motion.
I move we receive and file this information. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have no public hearing, so we'll move on to public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anybody? For public comments, right, you have three minutes.
Card goes there?
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you very much, this is Darryl Nolta. One of the most important functions for this facility, the Back Bay Science Center, tobacco monies went into this facility. Don O'Bren, the Irvine Company, put up something like $1.5 million. I've talked to Dave Kiff, who sits on the steering committee overseeing the research in the healthcare agency. Recently, I saw a very prominent citizen of Newport Beach who happens to sit on this board, and I'm not speaking for him, I'm simply speaking for myself. A private meeting, actually, which I would have loved to attend, which gets into another topic. But what I really want to focus on, the fact that the County of Orange, the healthcare agency, he used every excuse in the book not to, not to address the real item here, which is the biofilm research. We had an excellent, in the trailer, excellent work, some of you may know this, the Coastal Coalition. A certain individual in the county who's no longer in the healthcare agency gave a speech. She presented that speech at a national conference about the biofilm research. Some of you may know a little bit of what I'm talking about, biofilm. The concept of biofilm actually undercuts the issues of AB411. Dave Kiff has been a leader in this field, talking out about the flaws of AB411, and what a certain individual in the county, and Donna Ferguson, along with Dr. Skinner, showed that you can have regrowth of the indicator bacteria without pathogens. That completely destroys AB411. It completely destroys this testing, this 24-hour lab shutting down the beaches. Dave Kiff's been in many newspaper articles, talking about the issues of regrowth of certain bacteria. We've wasted, this city has wasted so much money trying to chase around their tail because AB411. Now, the EPA is supposed to be attempting to, to address this. Now, this county, that lab over there, in fact, on February, they came and lobbied you, the County of Orange, certain individuals, to ask you to support this. Some of the members may or may not have been on the board, I have the minutes of the meeting. That facility, that lab, the one-third of the facility, was to do research in coastal water quality. It hasn't been turned on. The biofilm research, over a year, over me screaming at the Board of Supervisors, talking to the people in the county, recently, I think last week, just wait. They blamed ONCERNA, which some of you may know what that is, tremendous overrun software project in the county, as an excuse for not doing this research. Newport Beach, I've been told, was going to put up $100,000 to fund the research over there in Back Bay Science Center. I'm running out of time, I apologize.
Actually, out of time?
I know I am.
If you can...
But what I want you, what I want the city, excuse me?
No.
What I want the city council in Newport Beach to do is put some pressure on the County of Orange. I supported Newport Beach in regards to the agreement with John Wayne Airport, some of you may know that, at the Board of Supervisors. I'm asking the members of this city council to stand up and say to the Board of Supervisors, please turn the research on, make Orange County a leader in the field of environmental biofilm, let's solve the problem with AB47. Silva, I believe, is willing to take up the issue and get the law modified. Thank you very much, I'm running over the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to make a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Hi, I'm Gillian Wertheim, and I'll try to keep this short and sweet. I'd like to talk to you tonight about an issue that I feel very strongly about, which would be our current environmental crisis. And I've seen An Inconvenient Truth and The 11th Hour, and it's really inspired me to make changes in my own lifestyle. And I started thinking about how much more of a difference I could make if I spoke to the council about changes that we as a city and a county can make. And I did some research, and I found something called the United States Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. And basically, it's an agreement with the city through the mayor that promises to reduce carbon emissions and really try to minimize our carbon footprint, if you will. We can do this through small things, turning lights off in buildings that aren't being used, using alternative fuel and energy sources. And I just really think that we, especially being a community on the coast, being very environmentally bound, should really take this as a serious issue and try to do the most that we can in order to protect what we have. So, I brought the agreement with me, but I don't know if you guys want to see it right now. But I just wanted to bring it up, have you guys all be aware of what we can do to help our environment. So, thank you.
Thank you, and you can actually pass your copy along to the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to let you know, we have something called the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee in our city, and they are working, and it's through a subcommittee, on a lot of the issues that are brought up in the mayor's proposal there.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
My name is Bob Rush. I'm here tonight to respond to a comment that Mayor Rizansy made at the October 17th council meeting, which was held to extend the moratorium for group homes. Mayor, in that meeting, you made a comment that there was a number of community members that had attempted to discredit or embarrass you with respect to some relationship that you had with a rehab house or you didn't have with a rehab house. Our intent was not to discredit you or embarrass you. Our intent was simply to identify those council members who had or don't have any type of a involvement with rehab houses, group houses, as we proceed into the issue of rehab home ordinance revision. There was a number of councilmen who were asked the exact same question as you, Nancy Gardner, Leslie Daigle, Mike Hen. Mike Hen was one of the first, asked the question almost a year ago. Do you have any involvement with group rehab homes, group homes, or any type of interest in, in their operations? Now, these folks answered the question pretty forthrightly and said, no. Or, in the case of Michael Hen, he mentioned that his pharmacy had some, some remote involvement with the rehab homes. Now, that's since been reviewed by the FPPC and felt to be not a significant issue. When we asked you, we got an answer that was kind of dancing around, it wasn't really a direct answer. You came back on the 17th and you said, okay, I have no financial interest in any group home or rehab home. Fine, we accept that. However, that's not what the question was. The question was, do you have any interest at all? Now, you had asked me, and a number of other community members that came up here and asked you point blank, you asked us if we had any evidence. Since then, we've received a number of different types of information related to some home that you were involved with, that apparently during your involvement went rehab. Now, you've been telling other council members and other people, other friends within the city, that apparently this did happen, and that when you found that this home went rehab or rehab-related activities began occurring, you disassociated with your house, you disassociated yourself with that house and no longer managed or owned it. I'm not exactly sure what the relationship was with the house. We accept that. However, in Newport Beach Conflict of Interest Procedures, it clearly states, "In cases where the official has a remote interest, it does not require disqualification from voting or participating in public debate. The official shall disclose the interest at the meeting. In all cases, disclosure of the interest or conflict shall be made part of the public record." Not the financial interest, the interest. Now, you have been...
Your time is up, Mr. Rush.
You have been, let me finish, I have 30 seconds. You've been involved with this house...
No, you don't have 30 seconds, your time is up.
You've been involved with this house for a period of three years.
Your time is up, sir, your time is up, thank you. I addressed these issues at our last meeting...
No, you didn't.
Sir, please sit down.
You're in violation of the Conflict of Interest Procedures of Newport Beach.
You're finished, sir.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you. As I said, I addressed these issues last week, or last week, I guess it was, it wasn't two weeks ago. I have no financial interest in a sober living facility, I do not now. Please sit down, sir, your time is up. Thank you. I addressed this issue last week, I'm not going to continually address the same issue. If Mr. Rush had the common courtesy to contact me directly instead of coming to the city council meeting, where I believe it is his intention to embarrass me, I'd be more than happy to discuss it with him offline, and I think I could satisfy any concerns that he might have. Even so, even if he's not willing to do that, I've discussed my finances, my business interests, any interest I could think of with the city attorney, I've discussed it with special counsel hired by the city with regard to this issue, I've discussed it with other special counsel hired that's on retainer to the city, and all three have indicated to me that I have no conflict, no financial interest that needs to be reported. I file my 700 returns when I am required to do so, I disclose any interest I have. And if Mr. Rush or anybody else in town has any information to the contrary, I suggest that you file, or they file, a complaint with the FPPC, and I'll deal with them directly on it. But if you're gonna come here and, and I'm not even just talking about you, Mr. Rush, anybody's gonna come here and, and make these allegations and not provide proof, you know, we have a public, please sit down, Mr. Rush.
I'll give you proof.
Please sit down. You, you, we'll talk about it after the meeting, but you've had your three minutes. I'll be, exactly, exactly my point. So therefore, anybody, I encourage anybody who has any information with regard to me or any other council member up here, that they feel that we have a conflict of interest, I encourage you to bring it forward. If you don't want to bring it to me, I, you can discuss it with the new legal counsel that we have hired to handle the group homes, sober living issue, and ordinance, moratorium. They have said at our last meeting that they are gonna do a conflicts investigation of every council member up here. So I encourage any member of the public who has any information with regard to me or any other council member up here to please, please provide that information to our attorneys. It's essential that you do so, and I encourage you to do so. And anybody who withholds that information should not be coming to the podium and castigating me or any other council member up here. And that's all I'm gonna say about it in the future. That's it. Thank you. Is there anybody else that has a public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our first, or our item, oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilman Gardner has none, Councilman Daigle?
Yes, through my representation on SCAG, they are looking at the regional transportation plan, RTP, and I look to work with staff to provide comments. It's quite involved, and it's also quite important, because as I understand it, few It's quite involved, and it's also quite important because as I understand it, future funding is- will be tied to the kinds of plans that they're coming up with. So, thank you.
Councilmember Webb, none. Council Hen? Councilwoman Curry? Council- or Mary Portemcelic?
None.
And I have none. Planning Commission agenda? Dave Lebo?
Mr. Mayor, well, Mr. Lebo's coming to the, uh, to the microphone while he's here already. Can I make a quick announcement?
Sure, go ahead.
It is about the 1-1.
Oh, yes, please do. I'm sorry, I meant to ask you-
No, that's okay. The, uh, First Battalion First Marine Committee, of which the city adopted the 1-1, normally has had a fundraiser over the last three years. This time of the year, and we've had what is called a mess night, and up to 400 people have attended that, uh, black and white dress affair, and it has been a major fundraiser for the 1-1 committee. Since the 1-1 is over in Iraq right now and won't come back until February, the committee is looking at doing a fundraiser and is going to do a golf tournament, with all proceeds going to the 1-1 or their families' funding. And that is Monday, November the 12th, and that will be at the Newport Beach Country Club. And if anybody wants more information, they can call City Hall at the City Manager's office, or also Danny Marchiano, who runs the New Arches, is in charge of that golf tournament. We can provide any further information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, what's your hole-in-one prize?
You know, I don't think it's a million dollars. I think it's a new car.
A new car?
Great.
Did you say that the funds were used for the families?
Yes.
We had a presentation at some lunch, and I was out with a- one of the soldiers, and he was saying, you know, don't worry about us. We're well taken care of by the government. It's our families that we're concerned about, so this is really a very worthwhile cause.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Lebo?
Mayor and members of City Council, I want to report on the October 23rd Planning Commission, excuse me, it wasn't the 23rd. 23rd, I can't remember what the date was. Sorry about that. Eighteenth, thank you, sir. First item for consideration was an appeal of a zoning administration administrator's decision on a modification permit set to do with overheight hedges primarily up in Harborview Hills at 1132 Ebtide. After quite a few hours, several hours of discussion, the Planning Commission substantially upheld the zoning administrator's provision with the exception of eliminating two sculptures from the modification permit which were overheight for the front yard.
I had a question for you. When I was looking through our, um, extension into yards, 20.60, it talks about site distance, which was incorrectly thought it was part of our Public Works Code, but apparently it's part of, um, planning and zoning, and it pertains to, um, the site distance that's required in terms of, of an intersection. Are you familiar with that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and how, how does that, um, fit into the approval?
Well, uh, Councilwoman Daigle, it really wasn't an issue here because the topography a lot is such, of a lot is such that the first 12 feet from the curb at Ebtide to the first hedge is 12 feet, and it's the slope, so there's nothing planted in the corner that is over the 30-inch height limit and right at the corner of Ebtide and Crown. So there was no discussion about their-
So you're talking about the public right-of-way area didn't have anything. I guess in, in addition to that, how do you get around the code section that says "extension into front yards"? It says fences, walls, hedges, and accessory structures shall be limited to three feet in height above the natural grade in all required front yard setback areas. Why is that being waived?
Okay, again, the first 12 feet was not in the public right-of-way, it was the first 12 feet of the front yard.
Oh, okay.
Yes, back of sidewalk. And there was nothing in that-
But how do you answer my second question of, of how do you get around the, the code section, uh, 20.60.030 that says nothing over three feet in the front yard?
Well, that was the basis for the modification permit, because otherwise, the hedge along Crown would not be allowed to be over three feet in height.
Yeah, and why did we think that that's a good idea?
Why did we think it's a good idea?
To make it over three feet.
After reviewing the facts of the matter, the zoning administrator determined and issued the modification permit to allow the hedges to be over three feet in that front yard, and then the Planning Commission sustained that determination.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry.
What facts were given?
Am I not, I'm sorry?
I, I don't understand how you, how you have facts that would support getting, it seems like to me that there's enough questions here that maybe when you-
Yeah. I think that's kind of where we're going with it. We wanted to maybe have a look at it.
Yeah, the, the first finding is that there's a particular, a particular difficulty applicable to this property, this circumstance, and some of the information that was presented that the Planning Commission considered had to do with noise from vehicles going up the incline along Crown, headlights of vehicles coming up the hill on Crown shining into the front windows of the property on Ebtide. As to the overheight driveway gate, it was the issue of cars coming down Crown before making the 90-degree turn. There haven't been two accidents where vehicles crashed through that gate. Those are some of the circumstances that the Planning Commission found constituted a practical difficulty for this property.
Did the staff report agree with the zoning administrator, or the zoning administrator's initial decision?
Uh, Mayor and Council, the staff report recommended that, in fact, the hedges be kept at three feet in height for a distance of 40 feet back from the Ebtide right-of-way, which would have required substantial amount of trimming of the existing hedges out there and is, was more radical in its approach than what the Planning Commission ultimately approved, which is, again, substantially what the zoning administrator had approved.
Okay, so we, I think we want to take a look at that.
Okay, you must bring that back then for review by council. We can do that. Uh, next one was another appeal of a modification request at 418 Redlands. This, again, was an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision. This was a modification permit to allow, addition to a ostensibly existing non-conforming dwelling. The technical issues and legal facts were pretty fascinating. At the end, the Planning Commission decided to continue this to the December meeting to allow the property owner to attempt to prove that, in fact, the house that encroached 13 feet in the front yard was, in fact, or is, in fact, legal and was legally constructed because we didn't have any evidence of that. Next one, item four, was a use permit parcel map and traffic study for approval for medical office buildings at 20372 Birch Street in Santa Ana Heights. After some questions about accessibility and permeability of pavement, the Planning Commission approved that project. Item five, again, was a local coastal program proposed amendment, and this had specifically to do with three policies that were very important in your discussion and action on the Aerie Project in Corona del Mar. These particular policies are related specifically to Ocean Boulevard Carination and Pacific Drive. Planning Commission took a look at the three policies and the changes we had recommended. The most significant change from what had been proposed to the Planning Commission for amendment was the fact that a third policy that attempts to provide the same direction to future applicants that the council provided to the Aerie applicant in terms of how you apply the predominant line of existing development and how you use that, not by and of itself, but in concert with other policies that talk about protecting coastal resources, coastal bluffs, was, in fact, amended by the Planning Commission to, again, apply specifically to those three streets of Corona del Mar. Concern was, the Planning Commission felt that that policy, without those three street names identified on it, applied citywide and should be considered in a more broad-brush approach to revising the overall coastal land use plan and the policies in that. Lastly, we took off the agenda, uh, for an indeterminate period, an appeal on 312 Hazel Drive has had to do with the Planning Director's determination of a setback line in the coastal canyon. We're working that out with the applicant, so we don't think this Planning Commission's going to have to act on that. Any questions? That's all we have for you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, moving on to continued business. McFadden Square Centennial Legacy Project approval of concept and design decision on sculpture contract.
I have some materials here for you.
Mr. Mayor, Rosansky, ladies and gentlemen of council and city executive staff, I'm Kerwin Rockefeller, and I'm the chairman of the Newport Beach Arts Commission. And we're here tonight to get your input and your consideration and approval of the artist that the ad hoc subcommittee of the Newport Beach Arts Commission is recommending for the McFadden Square project. A little bit of history, just to recap, please. In March of 2005, in response to the Centennial Committee's specific request, then Recreation and Senior Services Director Marie Knight asked the Newport Beach Arts Commission to assist with the development of a permanent legacy project to recognize donors and to commemorate the city's centennial. The project was designated to be installed in McFadden Square at the base of Newport Beer. The Arts Commission compiled criteria for the project and solicited requests for proposals from several architectural landscape firms in Newport Beach. Peridian International Incorporated designed, provided a project design, and offered to donate their design services. In September of 2007, the Public Arts Subcommittee of the Arts Commission met to review the applications that had been made for the sculptural element. We came to the conclusion that we would like to recommend for this particular sculpture to the City Council, Mr. Hank Kaminsky. And I've given all of you public relations packages on Mr. Kaminsky. He is from Fayetteville, Arkansas, and has a considerable career in doing public art projects. If I could just call to your attention one image, please, and this is in the very front of the color photographs. I'd like to call your attention to this spherical, uh, shape right here. There are a great deal of similarities between this particular image and what Mr. Kaminsky is proposing for McFadden Square. The changes or the differences would be that there would actually, excuse me, be images and scenes representing Newport Beach, past, present, and future. He is currently working on this design right now, and what we're asking for is for your consideration and approval so we can move forward with Mr. Kaminsky for further refining the images, the words, and also to build a model. Before we move into any discussion, I would like to introduce and invite, um, the fundraising committee chair of the McFadden Square project, Bernie Savalstad, to also give information and updates regarding our fundraising progress. Bernie?
Thank you, Kerwin. Bernie Savalstad, Corona Mar. So far, in your packet, I think it shows we've raised 350,000. We spent about 50,000, so we have 300,000 now. My projections are in little deference to some of the, what you have in the staff, although they have alluded to it. We have a person that's going to bid this project for probably come in 470,000, he feels. Probably 500 in the sculpture, 110, so that's 570 or thereabouts. Our budget's been working on trying to make 500. The staff report has some little differentiation from that, but I think that we'll be able to do that. So this project will be on a timeline that I think you have in your packet, that it went out to bid in the last couple of days. It'll become before your council for approval, hopefully on your November 27th packet, and construction will start probably after the first of the year. Hopefully, it'll be done by, um, April or so before the summer starts out there. By approving this tonight, this $10,000 start on this sculpture, uh, I think this contract says this for five months, so it'll probably, it could take him six months talking to him, but anyway, it's, it's five months around April 1st. So the whole thing works pretty well. I feel that there's no question in the long run that this will not cost the city Newport Beach a dime. I think that we'll end up, in the long run, uh, making all the funds. I'll address that a month from now when we talk about the actual project. And I request that you approve item A on your agenda. If you have any questions, we can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Anybody have any questions, Bernie or Kerwin?
Um, go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead.
Um, who's going to actually approve the final design when he does the graphic and the model?
We intend to bring that back to the City Council and let you see it. Other?
Uh, on the, um, I was noticing, um, on item 17, which is Oasis, the standard practice would seem to be that when we have an agreement, we connect it to an account, and I noticed that wasn't with this one. It would seem as if the appropriate account would be the donations for McFadden Square Centennial Project deposit account, 0129-5887, and current balance is 309,981. So I think it needs, would, that would be the account.
That's a good catch. Councilman Hen?
Yes, Kerwin, I have a question. It appears to me that the timeline here is fairly tight. We also have, though, some question, at least regarding the overall cost of the project and, uh, and the approval of the actual mockup of the sculpture. So is it important that we approve a contract with the artist tonight in order to keep this moving forward on the timeline that we need for completion?
It really is important for us to be able to move forward so we can, so we don't have a stall because of considerations of designing the project, buying materials, doing all the other work that he has to do to continue his research, to then give us his first sketches and his first ideas so that we can continue that dialogue to work with him.
So along those lines, and in view of the uncertainty on the total cost, would you be troubled if we asked staff to revise the contract as needed to make it clear that the first $10,000 payment would be adequate to get us to the point where the council would have sufficient photographic evidence of a mockup to approve?
Not a problem at all, yeah.
And also to complete his research, and that the city would not be obligated beyond that initial $10,000 payment until such approval was granted by the council?
Right, not a problem at all.
And that that probably would take place around the time that we have the bids in and have a feeling for the total cost of the project.
I might address this today. I didn't have a chance to give you a call, uh, Mr. Hen, but, uh, Mr. Bloudow and, uh, Aaron in the city attorney's office were at a meeting and discussed this, and he felt that the contract that you have there, uh, didn't need changing, but that it had the adequate wording that what you explained could happen, that we would not be obligated if we, um, decided that that was, uh, our desires. And Mr. Bloudow could, uh, address that, too, if he, is that true? Homer, what?
I can actually address that. Exactly as you recommended was one of the recommended changes that we would have to this. We've had experiences in the past that, um, I think we need to identify in the agreement who would be the person or entity, and in this case, I think it suggested if the council agrees, that it should be the council-
Yes.
-to make that approval of the, of the clay model before the first installment is made, since that's the first significant upfront amount of money. And there was one other-
Before the 30,000?
Before the 30,000 is paid, right. The, the first installment would be the, the, at the signing would be the 10,000 for the research and to prepare the, the model and the mockup, but, um, the 30,000 would not be paid until there was council approval. The other change would be recommended that the project manager not be somebody from the Recreation Department, but somebody from the Plan, uh, Public Works Department, to coordinate this contract with the Public Works process of developing the project. That's probably a, a better person to be in charge of the contract rather than somebody related to the Parks and Rec. That was another issue that we'd had before in monitoring these kind of contracts. The other question that I had was, just kind of, just came up with the comment that the artist thinks it might be six months instead of five months, so maybe we should go back and make sure that these dates and everything are good for him as well as the Public Works Department so that we don't constrain the contract so much that, um, there's going to be a breach from the start on getting it accomplished.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
With, with those changes, I move the item for approval.
Councilman Webb?
Uh, under, are you, are you suggesting that we're modifying the agreement, uh, to, under administration? Right now, it says the agreement will be administered by the Library Services Department, Jana Barbier, Cultural Arts Coordinator, so-
I misspoke. I, I should have, I'd forgotten that Jana's with the Library Services. I was thinking she was with-
So I think that what you're really saying is it would be administered by the Public Works Department?
Yes, I think that it should be-
Or Public Works Director, whatever it is. Or Public Works Director, whatever it is.
Okay, any further comment on this? We'll open up for public comment.
You want an engineer in charge of art, is what you're saying, right?
You're in charge of art, yes, or at least construction of art. Okay, seeing no one from the public wants a comment on this agenda item, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next agenda item is a justice assistance grant. We have a quick, quick staff report on this.
Okay, the only reason this is not on consent is because it does require, the grant requires an opportunity for public comments. In 1996, the city made application and was successful to fund a portion of the Crime Prevention Specialist position in the city of Newport Beach. We've applied every year since then, although the funding has gone down. But in 2005, programs were consolidated under a justice assistance grant, and we are a part of that. Unfortunately, we're down to $6,403 for this application, and this is for permission to make that application for that amount. Lieutenant Fox is in the audience.
I make a motion to move the item.
I'll open up for public comment.
I would also just note Lieutenant Fox's presence. He was instrumental in organizing the Keep Your Teen Safe Forum, so thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fox. Seeing no one for public comment, I'll close public comment. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Next agenda item, Oasis Senior Center Design Development Construction Documents, Bidding and Construction Administration, Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Robert R. Coffey, Architect and Associates. Do we have a fairly quick staff report on this? We did have a study session on this item, I believe, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Wes Morgan and myself are pleased to bring this to you. It's the next step in moving forward with the Oasis Senior Center Design Development Construction Documents and bidding documents and such. This contract represents a pretty comprehensive architectural package, including all of the appropriate subs and what have you. We've reviewed it. We feel it's very appropriate in size, although it is rather a large contract. It does represent a rather extensive investment in our Oasis Community Center. As you recall, we started this process with conceptual process back in March 2007. We're very pleased with how it's come out with Robert Coffey Architects and Associates. I'm sure the Friends of Oasis would agree with that statement, and we're really looking forward to moving forward with this project and getting it off the ground.
I see the Friends nodding their heads, yes, so I'm assuming they're in agreement. Councilman Curry?
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of this item. This is key to keeping this project on schedule. In fact, it advances it up several months, actually, in terms of our ability to produce the new Oasis Center. And I think I can represent a very enthusiastic level of support from the Friends of Oasis and from this steering committee, and I think everybody who attended the open house had a very, very strong and favorable reaction to Mr. Coffey's work. So I would move the item.
Second?
Thank you. I'll open up for public comment.
I have one comment first.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to point out, in talking with the Public Works Department, that this is a large contract for an architect, that it includes all civil engineering services, landscape architecture services, structural engineer, mechanical plumbing engineers, electrical engineers, lead consultant, audiovisual engineers, acoustical engineer, food surface consultant, and signage and graphics. So it's really a turnkey, complete design package with, I guess, the exception of soils engineering.
Pretty good. All right, I'll open up for public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close it. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Very good. Item number 18, I'll make a motion to continue this item. Open up for public comment. Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Item number 19, Letter to Metropolitan Water District Requesting Delay in Fluoridation Startup at the Deamer, or Dimer, I'm not sure which one. Deamer, okay, got it right the first time. Deamer Water Treatment Plant. Do we have a quick staff report on this?
Very quick staff report. You had a study session item two weeks ago on this issue about fluoridation being provided by the Metropolitan Water District. We get about 25% of the city's water from the district, so that fluoridation would be a part of our drinking water, although it would be mingled with about 75% of our water that comes from groundwater wells. I think it was Councilwoman Gardner who requested a letter that would ask the Met District for 60-day time to give the city an opportunity to review the issues that have been raised because there are some public concerns regarding fluoridation and its health effects, and that's why we brought the letter to you for your consideration tonight.
What type of things do you anticipate doing in the next 60 days?
Well, there was an issue raised by Councilman Curry as far as kind of a question-and-answer session regarding some of the issues that we heard, point by point, trying to talk with people in the healthcare industry as far as studies and trying to sift through the mountainous information available on studies that have been done regarding fluoridation.
So you're saying we'd have another session, a Q and A with health people, or you're referring to the one that we had?
No, I think this is a separate item, and it would be put on our website rather than coming back to the City Council on it.
Okay, anything else that we're considering?
I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody in council have comment?
I just, I brought this up because we do have, I mean, obviously, the people here are probably not all going to come up and say yay for fluoride. And
Yay for fluoride!
They might, yeah, okay, well. They have real concerns. The power of the internet, we can all become medical experts now. I have no way, at this point, of evaluating the information, but I know that their concerns are very real. And because they are concerned about something as basic as our water supply, I just felt if we could ask for this delay and give us time to contact, I sent Homer a number of questions that I had that I thought would be helpful to be answered, and to get that kind of information and get the confidence either way, I think that we would be serving our residents very well.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, I'm going to open up for public comment. Our first Sox fan. Is that a football uniform?
Yeah.
Football uniform.
You never cease to amaze me, Don. My name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I try not to be insulting. Okay, the reason why I'm here tonight is because of the fluoridation issue, but it's not fluoride, it's hydrofluoric acid, which is a hazardous byproduct of the phosphate fertilizer industry. What I will give to the clerk to submit his questions, is that the study session that we had, Mr. Damley said that hydrofluoric acid completely disassociates itself when it goes into water. There's a study done by Roger Masters out of Harvard that follows on a study done by a Westendorf or something in Germany. Please excuse me, I'm a little bit upset right now. Anyway, the bottom line to this study is, is that sodium fluoride, which was first introduced in the 1940s, is the substance that does completely, you know, like disassolve itself. Hydrofluoric acid and any other fluoride silicates do not completely disassociate itself when it goes into water. As a matter of fact, there's two free-floating fluorine ions that I guess you could call for basic human terms like me, free radicals, that will then attach itself to anything else, like when you cook with it, it will go into whatever, and also could attach itself in your body. So it does not completely disassociate, and I would like that answered by Metropolitan Water District as to where the study is that says it does. What I also gave to you was a letter from Roger Masters to the EPA in 2000, and what he asked is, do we have any empirical scientific data on the health effects of fluoristic acid or sodium silif- fluoride, manganese toxicity? And the reason why Masters is concerned is because when you get the hydrofluoric acid in our water supply, it comes free with lead and arsenic. And so that's what's bothering and troublesome is because the lead can break the blood-brain barrier. But anyway, the, what the EPA said in return was the, to answer your first question on whether we have in our position, in our possession, empirical scientific data on the effects of fluoristic acid on health and behavior, our answer is no. Health effects research is primarily conducted by our National Health and Environmental Effects Research Laboratory. We have contacted our colleagues at N H E E R L, and they report that with the exception of some acute toxicity data, they were unable to find any information on the effects of silica fluorides or hydrofluoric acid on health and behavior. So there is, it hasn't been tested by the FDA. We're getting medicated against our will. Secondly, I went to the city of Costa Mesa website by accident today, and it's very interesting because it said fluoride occurs naturally in our drinking water at an average of .4 parts per million. Equipment installed by the city increases the rate to .7 parts per million in accordance with the American Dental Association's recommended level for dental health in warm climates. And that is something that they are supposed to do, Councilmember Webb. I know you laughed when I talked about that the last time. So anyway, we live right next door to Costa Mesa, and I'm very concerned as to how we're going to get 1.2 milligrams per million, and why. Also, San Francisco, under Section Code Number 64433.2, you're supposed to also produce a five-year average of the temperature in the area that you want to fluoridate because they need to understand what you're, if you're in a warm climate or not, and also as to how much. When I called Mr. Damley up over at Metropolitan Water District, he told me that we currently had .4 milligrams in our water table, and that they were going to be giving us 1.2 milligrams per liter, and that by the time it came down to us, that it would get attenuated. And that's another question I have, is exactly what does he mean? What is his definition of attenuation? Because he said that the 1.2 would then turn into .7 or .8, and then would get added to the .4 that we have, and so that would make it that we would have 1.2. Now, other people that I've expressed that to think I'm crazy, and I could never have made this up because I didn't know anything about this before, so there's no way that I would remember anything like that, except it was told to me, and I took copious notes. So again, I want to know how much fluoride we're really getting, because this doesn't seem to make any sense at all. And I sent you all the article about how in San Diego, they were going to use the galvanized steel for the pipes, but then they realized that hydrofluoric acid eats through the galvanized steel, and so this is the year 2007. They should have known that a long time ago. And also, when this stuff came out in 1930-something, you know, that was okay, but this is the year 2007. Nobody dies of a cavity. We have global positioning satellites in our telephone. We can watch TV on our watch. It's a barbaric form of medication to have us swallow poison in order to protect our teeth. It comes with all health issues, and if people need their teeth, you can get them sealed nowadays. And the $5.5 million that the California Dental Association gave as a grant could have sealed a lot of children's teeth. And also, I'd like to know how much exactly we're going to be getting, how many tons in our water supply per year also. And I guess, oh, I want to give this to the clerk if I didn't already. Thank you for the extension of time. I see that my time is up.
Thank you, Dolores.
Mr. Mayor and council, staff, members of the public, my name is Larry Porter. I live in Newport Heights. I, too, would like to address the issue of fluoridation and add, I believe, some very important points to put on your radar screen. I'll start off my talk by showing you these packages of toothpaste I went to get today at the pharmacy. And let me pass some around. Please read on the back.
I'll use Colgate.
It's interesting, you guys, excuse me for taking my glasses off, that's the way I can see up closely. Warning: Keep out of reach of children under six years of age. If you accidentally swallow more than used for brushing, seek professional assistance or contact a poison control center immediately. That's the fluoride in the toothpaste. So they want to add hydrofluoric solistic acid to the water. Now, for the second part of my talk, I would like to use the overhead and show you and the public a material safety data sheet that shows how gnarly hydrofluoric solistic acid is. You don't want to get anywhere near it. And that's what they want to add to the water. Cool, cool, okay. Am I in page one, you guys?
Yeah.
Mosaic. This is puppy on? Is this guy? I know it's dinosaur. I'm a dinosaur, you guys. I admit it. Is it upside down? Is that right? We're getting there, Homer? Okay. Still, still, we're, oh, there we go. Oh, wait, upside down.
Larry, you're going to have to stop writing in code.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go, and then they, Homer, could you help? There's four, okay, hazard identification, health hazards. Large doses can cause nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, abdominal burning. You guys can read. Circulatory respiratory nervous complaints. Swallow can cause severe damage to throat and stomach, eye corrosive. Contact may cause severe irritation, skin corrosive, severe irritation, inhalation, breathing, harmful if inhaled. That's what Dolores mentioned. That's what they want to add to the water, the waste product from the mining of phosphoric acid in central Florida that contains known amounts of arsenic. Look, number, number two, please. Mr. Homer, there we go. There. This is a material safety data sheet, you guys. It goes with chemicals to give you admonitions that what you should do if you're around these chemicals. And harmful or fatal if swallowed may cause, there, you guys can read. Cancer ingredient is not classified as carcinogenic, but stuff that's come on my radar screen says it kind of changes things inside of you, and that's how it all starts, isn't it? Why would we want to put it in our water? We want water. H2O is, there, I, you, fresh air, administer oxygen, treat, get medical attention promptly. I passed out two weeks ago to you guys the material safety data sheet, and I think I can end now. It's the Mosaic Chemical Company. If you go on their website under industrial chemicals, you'll see hydrofluoric solistic acid. If you've misplaced these four pages, well, then you can get them yourself. And you, I think, can connect the dots. It's quite simple. This issue is the same as the waiver when they wanted to discharge untreated sewage out in the ocean, and they said, well, it'll just go away, and it'll just disappear. They said at the EPA. And the EPA on their website, they say, this is how you can have your cake and eat it too. You can get rid of a hazardous waste that you would have to pay and go through considerable trouble to make benign, to discharge it, if you put it in the water supply and allegedly fix everybody's teeth without having said what are the other effects of this chemical being in one's body. They're trying to say one size fits all, but you just read the toothpaste. One- One size does not fit all. So, thank you very much, Councilman Gardner, for delaying this issue, and I think this deserves further study.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else has a comment on this gen item? Please come forward. You'll have to raise your hand, just come up to the podium.
Thanks, Homer.
Now, I've given some leeway to the last two speakers, but we're going to stick strictly to the, is it five minutes we're giving? Five-minute rule? Yeah, so when the red light comes on, please, and your comments.
Hi. I'm Rick Weiss. I'm a physician at HOG. I've been on the staff for 20 years. And I have an 11-year-old. He's just about 12, and I care about his health. I care about my health, health, and everyone's health. Fluoridation is particularly American. It's in the United States more than anywhere else for some reason. And it started when asbestos was in our pipes, PCBs filled our transformers, and DDT was so safe and effective that it was sprayed on all our plants, in classrooms and picnic tables. One by one, these chemicals have been banned, but now we still have fluoridation. Okay, so I'm kind of looking at it from a health perspective, and the truth is, the bottom line is, it should be, the fluoridation people should come here and tell us why we need fluoridation, rather than us having to fight and fend off fluoridation. So, I'm looking at it as sort of a medical standpoint, and why should we, why should I, as a physician, put something in my patient's body that we don't know anything about? I can get sued for that in medical practice, but what is in the water system, nobody seems to care about it. So, that's what we're talking about here tonight. So, there's a couple of issues. One should be, should we be forcing people medication without their informed consent? Because this is obviously something that, you know, I see people coming in all the time. They drink water by the gallon, you know, and different people have different dosage. So, no physician has right senses but prescribe for a person he's never met, whose medical history doesn't know, a substance which can cause bodily change, and say, "Take as much as you like, but take it for the rest of your life," because some children may suffer tooth decay, which hasn't actually been borne out in the tests. So, that's one issue. The other issue is, it violates the individual's right for informed consent. We can't control the dose. We can't track each individual response, and some people may be more responsive to fluoride than others. So, I think it's incumbent upon the people putting fluoride in our system to say, "Why would we have to have, what the good of it is? Why, they have to prove it's good rather than us prove it's bad?" There's plenty of things that show that it's bad and it's toxic, okay? In fact, there are some, more recent studies, largest survey conducted in the United States showed only a very small, minute difference in tooth decay between children who had lived all their lives and fluoridated compared to non-fluoridated communities. The difference was not clinically significant. I couldn't get a paper published about anything based on that largest study on fluoridation. So, why should we have it in our system? I mean, I grew up in Philadelphia. I guess I had fluoridation. I thought it was good for tooth decay, but now I know better. And now we have the internet, and now we can look things up. It's not a joke. We are more informed, so we deserve an answer from someone. It's incumbent upon them to prove that it's safe. It's not, we shouldn't have to have a few people here that happen to show up and have time in their schedule and say, "Oh, it's not safe." There's a preponderance of evidence. There's, the weight of evidence from animal studies show that lifetime exposures to fluoride will contribute to higher rates of hip fractures in the elderly. Now, does somebody from the fluoride community or the Water Commission want to come down and tell us that's not true? There are serious, there are serious concerns about the connection between fluoridation and osteosarcoma. Okay? I'm much more concerned about that than some studies that have not been substantiated about possibly tooth decay. There's a statement on the internet signed by a thousand professionals from the United States. This was as recently as August 9th. It was a 500-page review of fluoride's toxicity, and it showed, it recommended that the Environmental Protection Agency's safe drinking water standard be lowered from what it is now because the panel reviewed a large body of literature in which fluoride has a statistically, now, this is statistically significant, association with a wide range of adverse effects, including increased risk of bone fractures, decreased thyroid function, lowered IQ, arthritic-like symptoms, dental fluorosis, and possibly osteosarcoma. So, rather than read all the rest of this, I think I'll respect the time that I've been given and hope that reason prevails, and we can hope for a reasoned response to this and have somebody show us why we should have fluoride in our system. Because if it's beneficial, I want it there. But let's have somebody show us that it's beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, folks, it's not necessary to applaud after every speaker. We don't usually entertain that. I've not said anything up till now, but if you, if you want to express your support and make a comment, please come to the podium. Otherwise, we understand that you're all here supporting the speakers. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much, Nancy, for making that motion last time when we came. Many of us, repeat visitors, asking for you to help protect us because we feel so strongly. And the more that I have read, even after the papers that I've given you, I think one of the things to look at is, you may have read that article, where in 1930, Alcoa had a surplus of byproducts from the aluminum, from the fertilizer industry and the production of aluminum, and they didn't know what to do with it. They found a way, instead of paying to get rid of it or less, they were saying, processing it so that it would be safe to dump, they found a way to sell it. And also, I think it's interesting that you're, the water people that were here, were saying that the water companies weren't going to help finance part of the development of the plants. I don't remember the extent of what they were doing. But I think that it's important to look at the financial interest in this. I mean, all the health issues have been covered. My family is here, and I really want it safe. I want to be safe. I don't want to see myself and my grandchildren and my children bathing and just thinking, "I'm soaking up this poison." Our skin being our largest organ. I don't want to drink water and thinking, "How much do I have?" It should be a matter of choice. And when we said the Pledge of Allegiance, and it said for liberty and justice, I really think that we should have that in this country. Our son just returned from Iraq, tied in for such. We should be able to choose. We should not be medicated against our will. If it is good for us, as the physician just pointed out, let us choose it as individuals, or our doctor, our dentist prescribe it. It isn't fair to impose it, and I really am begging Newport to stand up as a model for the rest of Southern California, because if all the city councils listen to their constituents and bring it up, then the Metropolitan Water Board won't sell us that 15% and increase our fluoride by that much. I would really appreciate that letter, a copy of it, how we can see that, and I can't thank you enough for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, could you give your name for the record, please?
Blythe Fair, Corona del Mar.
Blythe Fair, Corona del Mar. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name is Chris Sullivan. I live in Corona del Mar. Dolores and I have put together a letter that she's distributing to you right now, and I'm going to read it to you and to the audience. Dear Mayor Rosansky and City Council members, Dolores Audin and I, and many, many others, very much appreciate the attention that you have paid to the idea of adding hydrofluoric solistic acid to our drinking water. We never saw this coming. We were actually blindsided by it. I have attached a copy of the material safety data sheet for hydrofluoric solistic acid on pages 1 through 5. Please see page 3, section 11, under toxicological information. If you notice on page 3, there is no data available, none. I am requesting the following. Number one, please ask Metropolitan Water District or your immediate upline supplier of water to furnish from their chemical supplier or any other source a chronic toxicological study on hydrofluoric, hydrofluoric solistic acid. And, number two, obtain a statement from Mosaic, Met's chemical supplier and/or any other, stating that hydrofluoric solistic acid is effective when swallowed in reducing the incidence of teeth decay and is safe for all ranges and ages of all the various consumers and population in Newport Beach, infants, children, elderly, and those with compromised immune systems. It is your duty to do so, it is your duty to do your very best to provide the citizens of Newport Beach with the protection against inferior products or unaccountable manufacturers, is it not? Here is a sample statement that should be readily answered unless you are intent on perpetrating some huge misrepresentation or omission of material facts, which I believe you are not. Quote, "This specific product, as it is constituted and inclusive of contaminants, is effective at reducing the incidence of tooth decay when ingested in dilution amounts consisted with fluoridation goals of .7 to 1.2 milligrams of fluoride ion per liter, and is safe for the full range of expected human consumption at these dilution ranges without known or anticipated adverse health effects over a lifetime, including for infants, children, the elderly, and other populations afforded equal protection." End of quote. Rhetoric that does not discuss the actual product will not suffice. Our city and you, the city council, need proof in the form of an actual dated and complete document to show that Mosaic and other suppliers, if necessary, has submitted complete information for product review as is published as a requirement by NSF Standard 60, which is required by California law. If you, the city council, is unable to obtain these requirements, then you may determine that it is in the best interest to take the step of demanding of Met that, to the extent that any manufacturer of a chemical used to fluoridate has not fulfilled all laws, including ANSI/NSF Standard 60, Section 3.2.1, as published, we demand that Met cease all additions and select a substance that does comply with all California codes and regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that would like to comment on this gen item? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Phil Cutler, and I'm hard of hearing, so I hope I'm not repeating something that's already been said. In any event, I'd like to point out that roughly 90% or so of Europe where they had fluoridation gave it up. Those people aren't stupid. If they stopped doing it, there must have been a damn good reason for it. The other thing I'm concerned about is the fact that we're talking about this hydrofluor, or whatever it is, acid or something like that. There are many ways in which we can ingest fluorine into our systems, fluoride, if you want to call it that, but we can't really control it. One of the ladies pointed out that we don't know how much we're getting. You can get it from showering, and if there are these free radicals running around, they can attack the skin where you can actually develop perhaps a skin cancer or something. I'm not saying that's so. I don't know. I'm just projecting it. However, what we do know is that fluoride is a known bone carcinogen, except it takes a while before you show the effects of it. And additionally, it manifests itself in the form of hip fractures in the elderly. Well, I guess I haven't broken my hip yet or anything, but I haven't been exposed to too much fluoridation. But somebody's going to have to pay for this sort of thing somewhere along the line. And so, I guess my question is, why the heck do we even have to put this in the water? I don't see what it has anything to do with actually purifying the water. If somebody is crazy enough that they want to put a poison like that into the water because they think it's going to prevent their kids from getting cavities, well, then let them buy fluoride pills or whatever. Why medicate all the rest of us when we don't even want it? I guess that's pretty much it, except one thing that I'm wondering about. Why does this water treatment facility have to be even concerned about fluoridation, whereas to my mind, it has nothing specifically to do with actually purifying the water or treating the water itself? We're actually putting something in there supposedly to prevent dental caries or tooth decay, and it's been shown that the tooth itself can actually become weaker after a period of years, so that even though it may not have shown symptoms of tooth decay, at some point in time, if you ever want some cosmetic, whatever it is, work done on your teeth, that tooth might crumble, and it wouldn't be able to support any, whatever they do in the dentist's office. I shot my, like you folks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jerry Fair, Corona del Mar. I think they've presented it very well as far as the chemical evidence. I'm a businessperson. I've owned my own business for 40 years, and I'm sitting there listening to this, and I'm thinking, "What I would ask in that letter that I hope you send, and thank you again, Nancy, who's to benefit from this? What is, was it, you know, there's always money involved. Someone's going to make a profit on this. Maybe I'm being cynical, but being in business for many years, there's somebody. Are they building plants free? Are they adding money to the plants? Who's to benefit? In that letter that I hope you send, that's one of the things I would ask. The other thing my mind was asking myself, is this chemical cumulative in the body? There are some things that may not affect the body on a one-time basis, but over a child or a person's lifetime, and some of us who may not get fluoride for many more years may not have to be concerned. But if it is cumulative, these periods, these points of 1.2, .7, over the years, I know to get rid of toxins from the body is very difficult. If you go to alternative physicians who try to remove toxins from the body, they'll tell you that heavy metals are very difficult to remove from the body. I've had chelation, and I've attempted some of those. So, that's the two things that I would ask if I were writing the letter, in addition to many of the other things that they were asking, is who's to benefit, and why is this happening? And is it cumulative in the body, this toxic chemical that everyone has shown? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Christine Carr, and I spoke two weeks ago, and my question is, is how will we, as a community, know what you all are doing to take care of this matter? And as I sit here, I think, well, you know, if they wanted to put Sweet'N Low in the water to make it sweeter, would we, would we go crazy? I would. I mean, Sweet'N Low is so bad for us, and I think it's, it's one of those situations. We all need to be together, and I sit here, and I'm a little bit afraid because I see seven people up here, and I wonder what you guys are really thinking. And I don't even know how to really know what you guys think and what your, what your stand is on this, because if you at all think that it's good, you better sit down and have a good meeting and get some people that know better to talk to you, because it's, it's just not a necessary chemical to have in our systems. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, please don't shout from the audience. You've had your time at the podium. Thank you.
This is Darryl Nolte, again, a resident of Westminster. I appreciate very much the citizens of Newport Beach bringing this attention. I never would have known about this, except this has, item hasn't come in front of the City Council of Westminster. Caught my eye because it was in the newspaper about Newport Beach, about tonight, asking the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California to delay its plans to add fluoride to the drinking waters sold to Orange County cities, including Newport Beach. The Water District says it wants to bolster dental health, but some residents have complained about the health hazards they think are caused by fluorine, and the city's looking for an extra two months to study the issue. Now, I'd like to speak for myself, which is what I'm doing here as a, as a citizen of this county, is speaking for myself, even though I'm intimately involved in the politics of my own city. I am, I want to express a very deep concern about this, and I'm sure it will come in front of the City Council of Westminster. But you know, this board here is responsible not just for the, the issues pertaining to the citizens of Newport Beach, but everyone that comes into Newport Beach who spends their money, spends their time in the city, that don't have the ability to vote in this city. One of my favorite places is actually in Newport Beach, Carl's Jr., which I happened to spend a great deal of time, and I think you know where that's at, by John Wayne Airport. So, I, I'm very supportive of, of the citizens in regards to this. I do ask the same question, and I didn't even, you know, obviously, this was probably addressed at the study session on October 9th, 2007, but I'm going to again put it into the public record. Why is Metropolitan, and I will ask the same question if this comes in front of the City Council of Westminster, is why is Metropolitan, and I believe my city buys the water from Metropolitan, is why is Metropolitan putting in this fluoridation, whatever the chemical is? I listened very attentively to some of the speakers in regards to trying to explain the chemical nature. I'm a systems engineer. I have a great deal of training in chemistry. Without seeing documentation in a staff report, which I'm surprised there isn't more documentation documentation in a staff report, which I'm surprised, there isn't more documentation in the staff report in regards to this item. Because of my background involved in politics, I know that, I believe every year, they're supposed to be in front of the city council, which the city council votes, which is a water quality report, which every citizen, and you have to vote, and there's a public hearing about that, and I'm surprised that it isn't attached here, which will actually lay out the different chemical compositions of the imported water, as well as the water that's coming from the wells. I heard some of the speakers talk about the different concentrations, and so I don't actually know without actually seeing the documentation. I read the letter, and I would like you to, I support asking for a delay of this for obvious reasons, and I do appreciate the comments of the doctor. But again, this is a public health issue, and I'm quite amazed that, again, Metropolitan has the legal authority in the state of California to do this. I don't really actually know who has the direct legal authority in the state of California. I don't know if Newport Beach is a charter city or a general law city. Westminster is a general law city, which has to follow the particular requirements of the state of California, so I don't know about this particular city. But I thought this issue had been well debated many years ago. I, again, this issue brings up to me is, who actually has the authority at the local level in regards to putting in fluoridation or other types of chemicals in the water? There's always been about, the big controversy, of course, always has to do with the issue of chlorination, the content of chlorination in the water, whether it's inorganic or organic chlorination. So I completely support the citizens, and I ask the, to elaborate further on the letter, specifically in regards to providing a solid analysis, and I mean a chemical analysis of why they're doing this, the health issues, what gives them the legal authority to put this chemical, whatever it might be. I wrote down the formula, H2SI-F6. The gentleman put up the actual composition of the raw material, this material would be heavily diluted in the water coming down. And the thing that's really interesting to me is, I don't exactly understand how Metropolitan would actually separate the water out in the pipes to my city, or the city that I live in, or Newport Beach. I don't quite understand how you would actually do that. Fairly complex issue. So I support the citizens, and I think it's a very good thing to ask for a delay, and ask the Metropolitan to provide the documentation, so I support this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I was just wondering if any of you actually do care.
Ma'am, please state your name for the record.
Kim Couch.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you in particular even give a shit.
Is that your comment, ma'am?
Yeah. I want to know.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make a public, or speak during public comments? Case seen, no, we'll bring it back to council discussion.
I know when we had the issue of the Wi-Fi emissions, we had a professional come to the media committee, and I think the residents appreciated that, we made an attempt to address their issues on those emissions. Now, what was missing from the study session was a public health official, because the city council does want to make an informed decision, and we did try this evening, unfortunately, they're busy with the fires, so I think the council does want to make an informed decision. So, thank you.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, for the benefit of the young lady and for the doctor, that was the public comment where we listened to you. This is now the part where we get to comment and tell you what we think about what you all said. It's, that's how the meeting's organized, for people who are wondering what we think about it. Councilmember Gardner, are you going to offer this as a, as a motion to send this letter?
Yes, I am.
Well, I will, I will second Councilmember Gardner's motion. I think serious health questions deserve serious health answers. I think they ought to be published on our website, so that the citizens have a right to hear and see the answers to the questions that have been raised today, those that affect medical science. Now, let me make it clear for, I think some of the people in the audience know this, and some of them at home may or may not, the decision to put fluoride in the water of Newport Beach is not, or at least this particular water, is not a decision of the Newport Beach City Council. It's a decision of the Metropolitan Water District. We buy water from the Metropolitan Water District. The only tangential way we would have of ever rejecting this is simply to say, "We're not going to buy water from the source of 25% of our water," and that would not be a responsible thing to do, because there's no other place that we could buy it from. So, I believe the Metropolitan Water District owes, you know, people serious answers to serious questions. And I would also note that the Metropolitan Water District was directed by state law, AB 733 in 1995, to be specific, to fluoridate the water, which is what they say in their letter. So the real source of this comes with the California Legislature, so let's understand that, and understand the direction that Met Water is operating under, given to them by the state legislature. So, I support Councilmember Gardner's motion. I believe these are serious questions, they deserve serious answers, and I believe Metropolitan should take the time to get those answers out in the public domain.
Councilman Hem?
I support Councilwoman Gardner's motion as well. Frankly, it's hard for me to figure out as a layperson, the health arguments for and against here. One thing that is clear to me, though, is that people are making decisions that I have no input into, and so unfortunately, it doesn't appear that this is an area that we have a lot of discretion over as a city council. But it certainly wouldn't bother me, in fact, I would encourage folks to lobby at the state level to change the mandate that Metropolitan Water is under, in order for people to make their own choices about what they ingest. Thanks.
Anyone else make any comment? Okay, we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries.
All right, I believe that concludes our agenda. Motion for reconsideration, Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Case seen, none. As I said earlier in the evening, we are going to be having a special meeting of the, a joint meeting of the city council and planning commission on October 30th at 7:00. I just want to read a statement here that I was asked to read within connection with that meeting. "The city council and planning commission will hold a joint study session to hear a presentation on implementing the general plan in Newport Center and Fashion Island. Presentation will cover new zoning, transfer of development rights, and a development agreement. The meeting will be on Tuesday, October 30th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers." So I encourage anybody who's interested in that to join us. Finally, before we adjourn, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of two people who died last week, both residents of Newport Beach. The first was very well-known throughout the nation and probably the world, and he made his home here the last 10 years, and that was Joey Bishop. He died at the age of 89. Most of the older folks, I think, would remember him as part of the Rat Pack. I think that was a little bit before my time, although I've seen a couple of the movies on late-night TV.
I take it you're referring to me?
No, not you, maybe this guy next to me over here, maybe Nancy, she's a Rat Packer. But Leslie and I, we're a different generation. We're Batman and Robin, we're not the Rat Pack. But in any event, he was a resident here on Lido for the last decade or so, and he, I know his humor and his entertainment will be missed by all. And finally, I'd like to mention the passing of Art Gronski. Now, he probably wasn't a nationally known figure, but he certainly was very well-known here in the city of Newport Beach. In fact, if I go so far as to say, he was really a part of our living history here, and he will be sorely missed. I know personally, I always enjoyed seeing Art tooling around town, he had a black T-Bird that he would go zipping around, and if you know Art in his later years here, he wasn't moving so fast on two legs, but put him behind the wheel of that T-Bird, and he was, he was really going. But he was very active up until the very end. He was involved in so many things. His family owned the pavilion at one, at one point in the 50s. He had Art's Landing, which was a fishing landing there on the peninsula in Balboa for years, and he was also involved with the Nautical Museum, the Boy Scout Seabase, I know he was on the fundraising efforts just the last five years to rebuild that facility. He used to take children out on his boats, you know, underprivileged children, to expose them to fishing and the sea, and so I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to add anything else, probably people who knew him a lot longer and a lot better than I did, but, but he, excuse me, he will be missed. Thank you.
I just want to say that Art was a few years younger than my father, and they went back almost that long, so 80-some years, and we have lost a lot of history now. But what really impressed me about Art was how engaged he remained up to the end. I mean, he was so involved in so many things, and I, he gave me something to look forward to. This is the way as you get older, that you stay young.
Certainly. Anybody else? Thank you, we're adjourned.